I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the village board. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markhart.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Schenk. Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Lundin.
Here.
President Cook.
Here.
And trustee Takaoka gave prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Okay, we have a quorum, so the meeting is called to order. Would everyone please stand if you are able for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Had one person sign in wishing to address the board, Jenna Garcia? Hi. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Jenna Garcia. I am here on behalf of the Hawthorne 73 PTO as acting president. I wanted to thank all of you for the incredible amount of time and effort that you put into helping us host a successful first-ever Hawthorne Hoptoberfest a week and a half ago at Melody Farms. It was an incredible event. We had just over 150 people in attendance. We had a ton of people walk up, which was really fun because they saw what a great time all of the participants were having. Everyone got these lovely glass steins, and so I've brought one for each of you as a gift, as well as they got these tote bags, which have a bunch of Melody Farm coupons and stuff in it. And I want to say a special thank you to Mayor Cook, who attended. He already got his sign, so I am giving him what the designated drivers got. They got a plastic tumbler. So anyhow, thank you so much. It was a huge learning experience for me, working with the village, understanding all the processes, liquor licenses and all that. Lots of lessons learned, and we are excited to hopefully do this again moving forward because it seems like everybody had a great time. So, thank you.
Yeah, it was a very good event, and the weather couldn't have been better, so it was.
Perfect weather. We couldn't have even ordered better weather.
Yeah, yeah. No, it was a fabulous, fabulous event, so.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Even though nobody signed in, there's nobody else wishing to? All right. Then, in that case, under official reports, the village president's report, I've got a proclamation here to read for Steve Maslov. Steve Maslov began his, and this is in recognition of his service to the Vernon Hills Public Works Department. Steve Maslov began employment with the village of Vernon Hills Engineering Division on April 10, 1995, and ended his more than 30 years of dedicated service to the village as a senior engineering technician. Steve assisted with the overseeing, the engineering and construction of some of the biggest developments throughout the village, including, and listen to this list, including Greg's Landing Subdivision and Retail, Melody Farms, the residence at Cuneo, and Hawthorne 2.0, all of those. He has spent his career ensuring that the highest standards have been met for all the projects that are constructed in our village. Steve also oversaw annually several capital improvement projects, including the village's road rehabilitation program. He always succeeded in having the project come in under budget and the final product meeting expectations. Steve also proudly served as a snow fighter by dedicating many tiring hours behind the wheel of a snowplow, keeping the streets safe for our residents. Steve is a loving husband and father and enjoys spending time with his daughters and his dog. He has been an essential asset to the village of Vernon Hills throughout his career, serving with professionalism and distinction. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the president and board of trustees of the village of Vernon Hills, on behalf of the entire Vernon Hills community, County of Lake, extend to Steve Maslov their gratitude and thanks for his 30-plus years of service to the community and the public works profession. Congratulations. And this, of course, is for you, this one. Let me open it up, see. And you don't have to say anything, but you can if you'd like to.
I'd like to take the opportunity.
No. Oh, you have to do the mic. Sorry.
I'm usually the guy behind the microphone, so. Like to take the opportunity to thank everybody here at the village, past and present, who helped real well with developing my career, and once again, thank you all for your support, and this was a pleasure working here, and I wouldn't have had it any other way, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Steve, congratulations.
All you need to do is take a look at that list of projects to know how much you've, how much the influence you've had on how great this community is right now, so thank you very much. Anybody else on the board? Trustee Lundin.
I just want to say, congratulations. I wish you all the best. It was a pleasure to work with you all these years, so I hope that you and your beautiful wife have fun. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next item is the village manager, the Vernon Hills Golf Course Fall Update. And by the way, we'll take a moment if anybody was here for, Steve, if anybody's here for Steve wants to leave, feel free. Or you can hang around, it's up to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Manager?
While the golf season's not over yet, it is winding down with the weather changing, and we just wanted to take an opportunity this evening to provide an update on the Vernon Hills Golf Course. And with us this evening are Vince Juarez and Mary Kate Walsh from Kemper Sports to give a rundown of this past year and a look ahead to 2026.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I think it's been several months since we've been in front of you, so just wanted to kind of give an update as to what's been happening over at the muni the last several months. We've had several community events that we've had at the muni. Back in August, we hosted the Afternoon on the Back Nine, which we had 104 of our closest friends of the community out to the muni for an afternoon. I know Mayor Cook was there. I believe trustee Forster was there later in the day. It was a wonderful event. We had the Chicago School of Golf out that had a demo out on the Back Nine. We had food that we had catered in from a local caterer. We had live music that we brought in from one of our musicians that handles some of the other golf courses that we had. It was just a fun afternoon, really, to introduce some of the community that hasn't been to the muni or hasn't been to the muni in a while, to show them what the muni is all about. So it was just a wonderful afternoon that everybody had some great fun at.
And one of the best parts of that was a number of the, quite a number of the people that were there were families.
Yes.
So that was a good point for the event.
Yeah. We hosted, we recently hosted a glow ball event for the community. Glow ball, we light up the entire golf course, light up four holes of the golf course, and really just have a fun evening after dark of golf out on the muni. I think we did, we had 19 players that played in this particular event. We had four members that played, 15 non-members, and it's really like landing a plane out on the golf course. It's illuminated, it looks great, you have glow balls, and it's really a one-time cost that you buy the supplies and you can reuse them every year. So it was a break-even event, but it really got people out to the muni again to do something that maybe they haven't experienced in a while, that's golf after dark, or ever. We have two events planned for glow ball for 2026, so just another fun evening of golf.
Well, I think those will be better attended because previously glow golf had only involved a glowing hole and one of those balls with a little stick in it, which you can't hit very far. And these, you could actually hit quite far, and with all of the, both green and red, the way everything was laid out, it was just a sensational evening, and there were an awful lot of people after they found out how different this was from any other glow golf they'd ever done, heard a lot of people talking about they'll attend the ones next year, so.
Yeah. Technology has certainly changed. We used to set up the golf courses with luminaries like you would for Christmas and caroling. Now you set them up with sticks that go on both sides of the fairways and glow sticks for the holes that light the holes, so it's really changed quite nicely. We have a couple other community events that we have still remaining or had remaining for 2025. We had a 3-3-3 tournament, which was a scramble, a best ball, and alternate shot. That was last week. It was on the 18th of October. It rained that day, so we had a lot of cancellations, but we did have two teams that came out, which is nice. We did run the event with the teams, and again, just trying to get some of the community involved in different aspects of the golf course and coming out and seeing the facility, spending time at the facility, having some food, drinking, et cetera. We have the turkey shoot, which is scheduled for November 8, obviously in conjunction with the upcoming holidays, and then we've been having some game day specials in the bar, which has been going really well.
And this slide just provides a quick overview of our marketing efforts year-to-date through the end of September, so you'll see here, and I know that the screenshots are a little small, but we have a website overview, social media, and then our paid campaigns. So we've had really strong growth in traffic and engagement on our site, which has been great. A lot of that driven by the new programming with the Back Nine. And then on social media, consistent engagement there, as well as we started to see steady growth, so a lot of our posts have been about the events on property, junior golf programming, et cetera. And then the two tiles on the bottom, so these are our paid campaigns, so this season we implemented paperclip, pay-per-click, and then targeted display ads. So the goal was to drive tee time bookings as well as brand visibility and awareness, so we'll continue those throughout the rest of this month as well and kick off again in the spring.
I'm gonna go a little bit out of order here. Chicago School of Golf, they have wrapped up for the season. For those of you that recall, we contracted with a third-party contractor for Chicago School of Golf to provide instruction, something that the muni really hasn't had in the years that we've been associated with the club. So we brought the Chicago School of Golf, that has camps over in Buffalo Grove and now Vernon Hills as well. We had 61 total registrations. We had 22 camp sales, those are summer camp. We had 13 Get Ready Golf specialized for women, 13 Get Ready Golf for men, and 15 junior programs in addition to all the individual private lessons that were done. So while the revenue is relatively low, it's $3,000 for the muni, it just provides that much more exposure of the golf course to the community, and we expect that to uptick here in 2026. We really didn't get started until later in the year with the Back Nine not opening until late May, so really good things in tune for '26 on instruction. We've been working on some administrative improvements, some POS, point-of-sale reorganization, implementing some additional hotkeys on the POS to make it easier for the teams on the ground, both in the bar and the pro shop. We've been modifying the inventory system, both in the pro shop and on the food and beverage side. We've got some adjusted financial procedures that we're working on with Tom at the village on month-end procedures, daily cash handling, invoice processing, and then doing a lot of different staff training with the different staff that we have. We've hired a lot of new staff at the facility, and then we've been working on some food and beverage analysis and some bar improvements. We do plan on coming back to the board in November to talk about rates and to talk about some different price structures and some recommendations for 2026. You can expect to get some information on that well ahead of time, in advance of hopefully your November meeting. Happy to announce, although I always hate to announce it before they walk in the door, but we have hired a GM. He's scheduled to start on November 17, so more information on that as we get moving towards that date, but again, you know, that date is an important date, so we'll wait until the door opens on that day. But things have been going well the last several months, and again, we're gonna be back in November to talk about the proposed rate plan, pricing proposal to the board for FY '26. We've been looking at usage throughout each day of the week. We've been looking at the dynamic pricing models to see how much the pickup was for FY '25 versus what it would have been with static rates, so we're just about ready to come and make our recommendations to you all. So a great couple months, appreciate the support, and we'll see you in November.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board and/or anything else from trustee Lundin?
I'm excited to see Jason come back.
Yeah, we are too. So Jason Pablocki, I think you probably all know, Jason Pablocki, who we've hired to be the next, the returning general manager at the muni. Jason worked for us back for a couple years, back in the early 2000s, and then he left to go to another location, moved out to California, and is coming back from California. So, great guy, we've got a lot of working relationship with him. Many of you know him as well, just a super, super person. So we're looking forward to having somebody that's knowledgeable about the process, the procedures, and that has been here before and is well-respected, so.
That news was very well-received.
Yep.
At the course.
Absolutely.
Yeah, at the course, it was extremely well-received.
Yeah, we're happy about it, too.
Yeah.
We're happy. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you. Anything else from the village manager? No? Okay, then, next thing I've got on the agenda is the finance director, treasure.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. So I'll call the auditor up here in just a moment to cover the fiscal '25 audit presentation that we just completed. First, I just wanted to spend a few minutes with the board to go over fiscal '25 financial results and review those at a high level here. Again, this is for the year beginning May 1, 2024, and ending April 30, 2025. So this first slide really incorporates the whole village, so a government-wide look. This, when I say governmental activities, what I'm looking at here is, these are all governmental funds, so not just the general fund, not just a TIF fund, these are all governmental funds in addition to any value of capital assets and long-term debt. So this, if the village were a business, this is kind of how it would be presented. And when I say net position increased $12.8 million during the year to end the year at $110.1 million net position. Net position does not equal cash, that's a part of the net position, however, other assets and net with other liabilities of the whole village make up that net position. And for example, the portion related to the capital asset value is about $75 million of that $110 million. One quick note here, when I said governmental funds, this does not include the operations of the golf course or the metro parking lot or the police pension fund. So looking at revenues, they grew $3 million or 6% during the year to end the year at $53 million. Few highlights here, the 1% municipal sales tax did increase $1.7 million over the prior year. The back half of the year did see an uptick in retail sales activity, which is good to see. Investment income increased $1.1 million during the year. The interest rates we're receiving from year to year were pretty comparable, they were in a pretty similar range, however, the balances, cash and investment balances did go up, so we did realize a little bit of extra income there. TIF tax increment revenue did increase as we're seeing property values assessments in the TIF districts increase. So expenses grew $3.8 million or 10.4% to $40.2 million for the year. Two items I want to point out here as one-time items, we did have a donation to the park district for $400,000 during the year to help with the splash pad, in addition to large subsidies to the golf course for the putting green and other operations. The long-term debt was reduced during the year by $3.1 million as scheduled to end the year at $22 million without saying debt. Okay, taking a look at the general fund then, this is more on the lines of what we present throughout the year. The actual revenues in the fund finished at $39.2 million, which is in excess of budget of $1.7 million. The actual expenditures and other financing uses finished the year at $46 million. Again, this is under budget, $1.9 million, but I do want to point out in fiscal '25, we did have a $11.3 million transfer from the general fund balance to the capital and the vehicle replacement funds. That balance is not gone, it's just in those other funds now and not reported here, but that was to continually provide funding for future capital and replacement projects. After removing some one-time items, the expenditures in the general fund were up 2.4% and compared to inflation at the same time period of 2.3%, so that, I would say that's on target. Fund balance did decrease $6.8 million to $41.8 million. Now, this is less than we anticipated because of that $11.3 million transfer I just noted, so to better maybe explain this, if we move our attention to the top right, I do have this in table format here, so we have two columns, actual and budget. If we look at the budget column first, we plan to start the year with a $48.3 million balance and spend down $10.4 million of that general fund balance to finish the year at $37.9. In actuality, with revenues performing better than budget and expenses under budget, we did finish at $41.4, or only a decrease of $6.8 million in that context. Lastly, in the bottom right here, looking at the fund balance as a percent of expenditures, we just want to look at how the fund balance can maintain the fund if no new revenues or inflows were to move into the fund throughout the year, and ending the year at $41.4 million with expenditures of $31.1 million, we have a coverage of 133%. And that, when we compare that to how we planned the year to start, it's an increase over the 116% that we had budgeted. So the general fund performed better than anticipated. Just some, to recap the year here, cash and investment balances continue to grow, the fund balance of the general fund far exceeded the minimum balances. Retail sales activity did pick back up and grew from the prior year. The general long-term debt is still minimal, and a AAA bond rating is expected to continue. Now, there is more information here, this is a pretty high-level summary, but the fiscal '25 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or the ACFER, is also included in your packet tonight on page 18 of the full packet PDF. If you're not interested in reading the whole 137-page document, the management discussion and analysis section in that document is on page four, and it's just through page 13, which gives a nice summary of the year. The fourth quarter quarterly financial report also contains further detail of the year's activities with more budget versus actual focus. Both of these reports have been emailed to the board for your reference. Of course, I'm available for questions anytime as needed, and there will be a test, so make sure you get your questions answered. So, that being said, is there any questions? I'm happy to get a couple smiles, thank you.
Tom, in the quarterly financial report you sent us, fourth quarter, there's a, in the general fund, you mentioned 11.3 capital fund transfer, but then it says offsetting this decrease, the general fund report in excess of revenues over expenditures of $8.1 million, strong revenue growth. Where does that reflect in some of the numbers you were?
Give me a second, let me pull that up.
Yeah. I got it right here.
So I don't have all the pieces of that on top of my head right now, but I will get that for you very shortly.
Okay.
I'd rather not.
Answer right, no, I understand.
I want to answer it properly.
Can you do me a favor? Can you go back like maybe five slides here?
I have three.
Okay, maybe. Is this the first one?
This is the first one, yeah.
Is this the first one? Okay, expenses grew 3.8, economic incentives.
Yes.
Did you explain that, what that was?
So economic incentives, so as we, our focus is large sales tax-generated community, so we don't have a property tax. And in the past, to incentivize certain businesses in town, we provide an incentive of payback of a rebate.
I understand. Okay, thank you. Now I know what this is. So the more business they do, that incentive will increase.
That's correct.
Our subsidy will increase, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Have you ever tracked if that's in line with CPI, or is there any, you just?
We do track that, and I believe I did put that in that quarterly fourth quarter report. If you go down to the sales tax section, there is, it's broken down by retail center as well as top five versus all other, so it shows you what the top five businesses. Now, they don't always align in their growth.
Right.
So it's hard to pinpoint those specific businesses, and there is some confidentiality in what I can report.
Got it, understood. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
Any other questions from the board?
So before I call the auditor up then to present the audit, I would like to share the Government Finance Officers Association, otherwise known as GFOA, has awarded the village their certificate of achievement in excellence for financial reporting for its 22nd consecutive year. This certificate is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents significant accomplishment by a government and its management. I would like to thank the board for the continued support, and staff, especially finance, for helping prepare all the financial reports. With that, I will invite Ed Tracy up with Selden Fox to present the fiscal '25 audit.
Well, thank you for having me here this evening. Before I start, I'd like to thank Tom and his team for all their assistance during the audit this year. We'd come out, he has things ready for us, and we're able to come in and do our work efficiently, and so we certainly appreciate when that's the case. The purpose of the audit is to provide reasonable but not absolute assurance that the financial statements are fairly presented, so we do provide an opinion in the audit. There's an independent audit report that's at the start of the financial section, and we give an opinion on the government-wide financial statements, each major fund, and then the remaining non-major funds in the aggregate. And we set a materiality level for each of those opinion units. So when we do, what we mean there is, so when we look at things, we look at things with a certain materiality in mind. If we see something that, an adjustment that we feel needs to be made, if it's below that materiality level, we usually kind of accumulate those, and if they reach a significance, then we'll propose adjustments. We did not have any adjustments that we needed to make to the financial statements this year. The management team did provide some adjustments during the course of the audit from the original trial balance as they were kind of finalizing some things, but overall, there were no additional adjustments that we were required to make. When I talk about the major funds, I'm referring to the funds that make up more than 10% of the total assets, liabilities, revenues, or expenses of the village as a whole, excluding pension funds. For the Vernon Hills this year, the major funds were the general fund, the capital fund, and the Milwaukee Avenue Town Line Road TIF fund. Part of the audit, we do take a look at internal controls. We design our audit procedures based on a review of these internal controls, and the financial statement audit doesn't give an opinion on internal controls, but if we identify weaknesses in the systems, we would bring those to your attention in a management letter as either a material weakness or significant deficiency. We did not have any of those this year either, so we did not have to issue that management letter. When we're looking at internal controls, we walk through transactions to make sure the controls are operating as designed. We also then perform additional tests of controls just to determine the extent that we can rely on those when we're designing our audit procedures. I felt the audit itself went very smoothly as I mentioned before, everything was ready for us. We send out a list ahead of time, it'd be a portal, they upload documents to the portal, and, you know, so when we come in, we're ready to go, we've already got started, and, you know, it makes the process that much efficient, more efficient, so we certainly appreciated that as well. This year, there were a couple new standards that were adopted, GASB statements that became effective this year. One, GASB 101, related to compensated absences. It kind of changed the way some governments account for primarily sick pay. There was a lot of inconsistency in practice, so the standard came out to try to clarify some of those inconsistencies, and so that was adopted this year, and that had the effect of reducing, beating that position in the governmental-wide financial statements by just over a million, as it was now required to pick up some additional liabilities related to sick pay. This year, as part of the budget document, at the start of the year, you incorporated some fund structure changes, which resulted in some changes in the report presentation, and because of that, there was a new standard that was coming down the pipe that's actually not, wasn't required to be implemented this year, but it was GASB Statement 103 on financial reporting model improvements. But given the change that were already being made in the structure, fund structure of the village, management determined, decided to go ahead and implement that early, so that standard was also adopted this year. So a little bit of changes in terms of the presentation, and so we certainly appreciated all the hard work that Tom and his team did to make that happen. He mentioned looking at the management discussion. He mentioned looking at the management discussion analysis section as a kind of a, if you don't want to read the hundred and some pages, I don't know why, but if you don't, that's certainly, I would recommend that as well. I would also, if you want to kind of get an understanding of some of the changes in the fund structure and how that affected the overall financial statements, I would also recommend, there's notes 14 and 15 in the report beginning on page 71, which really provided a good description of those changes, and so that's a good reference to take a look at as well. Just some final highlights, I mean, I think the financial highlights you already got were well done. I do, I always like to kind of point out where the pension funds are at this point in time. IMRF was 95.8% funded, which was slightly up from the 95.5% in the prior year. The police fund is now 76% funded, up from about 71% in the prior year. And then you also have another post-employment benefit plan, kind of retiree health plan, which isn't funded, it's kind of more on a pay-as-you-go basis, but the liability related to that total other post-employment benefit plan was decreased by about 1.6 million in this past year, so it was at about 5.2 million at the end of the year. Again, overall, you know, the back schedule of the report have a lot of good budget versus actual information, and as a whole, the village did a really good job staying within budget. Very few examples of expenditure line items being over budget by any significant amount. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on the audit or anything else.
A quick question, you, in part of the cover letter net, there was talk about corrections, and that's, most of those corrections are tied to what you talked about in the changes in system?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so certainly, because of the, primarily the compensated absences adjustment that was required by the new standard, it did require a look back, I guess, and so there was a restatement to the beginning net position for that amount, so that the net effect in the current year P and L was minimal because the effect of adopting it was, hit the beginning of the period net position, and so the only effect in the current year was the change from year over year, which is kind of what's always been the case with that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I do have an answer to Trustee Schenck's question from earlier. So you had referenced the, in the general fund in the quarter four report, there was an excess of revenues of 8.1 million over expenditures. So the way the financial statements are laid out, we see the revenues, below them are the expenditures, and then we have a net excess of revenues over expenditures or vice versa. In the general fund, we had 39.1 million in revenues, less 31.1 in expenditures, so that 8.1 million difference is the excess in revenues. However, after that comes all the transfers. So we had the 11.3 million dollar transfer after that, a million dollar transfer to the capital fund just for the annual capital transfer and so on and so forth, so that was how that's.
So outside of the transfers, our, the 8.1 was, was, that was an increase from the previous year then, of 8.1 million is what we're saying then? Or it's just our revenues minus expenses was 8.1 million?
Yeah, revenues minus expenses were 8.1 million, and they were similarly high in the prior year, like that, because there's a lot of, the general fund.
Sales tax driving that. Primarily?
Yeah, primarily sales tax, and not just the 1%, but all the types of sales tax we have here.
Yeah.
And the general fund has to run a higher revenue over expenses because there is a lot of money that goes out of the general fund to fund other operation, other operations and capital funds.
So if you were to rate a financial health of the village right now between the two of you guys, on like a letter grade, where would our financial health be?
I would probably, I would probably give it an eight right now, and it's really.
Pluses and minuses count too, like A minus.
I'll go A plus.
I think, I think the financial situation is really good. Especially when you consider the fact that, I mean, you don't have a property tax, which is, I'm not aware, none of my other municipal clients are without a property tax, and to have the diversified revenue sources that you do without having the property tax is, to me, it's an indication of a very strong local economy, I guess.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
And Tom, great job by you and your, your team. Everything looks good, so.
Happy to be here, great place to work, love it.
You are carrying on the legacy of Larry Nakman very well. He started getting all those awards. Okay, anybody else from staff have any speaking part this evening? No? All right, then the next item is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and/or non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If any one board member, staff, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on an item, it will be pulled from the omnibus and voted on separately. Is there a motion to approve items A through D? Motion to approve? Motion a second. Comments, questions? Hearing on roll call, please.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenck.
Aye.
Trustee Lundin.
Aye.
President Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we have no unfinished business or new business, correct? Okay, then any communications anyone has? I will just add that I was going to talk about the October Fest, which went very, very well, and then this past weekend, Trustee Lundin and I were at the Harvest Fest, which was very, very well-attended, and a very, very good band, and the three sisters who were there were an amazing.
Amazing.
Amazing talent. So it was a very, very good afternoon, lots of vendors and a lot of people, so it was very well-attended. Also, we have, for anyone interested, veterans in that, we have on Tuesday, I believe it's Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday the 11th, which is the actual Veterans Day, there will be a Veterans Breakfast from 8:00 to 9:30 a.m. at Hawthorne Middle South. And if there's anybody that knows a veteran that would like to be honored at that, please feel free to have them contact Hawthorne Middle School South, and it's, it's always a good event every year. I know a couple of you guys can talk about later, but yeah, if you know anybody, please feel free to contact us. Anything else anybody else has? Okay, in that case then, is there a motion to adjourn the village board meeting and go to committee of the whole?
I move to adjourn the village board meeting to go to committee of the whole.
Second.
We have a motion a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are adjourned. Okay, then I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Schenck.
Here.
Trustee Lundin.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Markarth.
Here.
President Cook.
Here.
And Trustee Takaoka gave prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
No one signed up? Were there any citizens wishing to address the board other than what's on here? Okay, all right. Then our first item is approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of October 21st, 2025. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion a second, any questions, comments, corrections, additions?
Should be October 7th.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, it's, I'm just reading, yeah.
The minutes are closed.
You're correct, it's minutes of October 7th, thank you. You give me a script and I read it, you know, it's like, I read the prompter. Yeah, this is the October 7th minutes. Any comments, questions, corrections? Again, motion to approve. We have a motion a second?
Yeah, we have both.
Okay, then a roll call, please.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
I'm staying.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenck.
Aye.
Trustee Lundin.
Aye.
President Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next item is the request for honorary street signage at the Vernon Hills Athletic Complex, requested by the American Legion Vernon Hills Post 1247.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Craig Warner, resident of Vernon Hills, a veteran and a member of American Legion Post 1247, and as it says up there, we'd like to make a request that the streets of, is it Cougar Way and Nike Parkway, receive honorary signage to commemorate two U.S. aircraft carriers, the Wolverine and the Sabre. And I'm sure you're all aware of the history of the athletic fields that in World War II, there was an airfield there that was used for the qualification of Navy pilots to learn to land on carriers, take off of carriers, and when they qualified at our field, they actually went out and landed on two aircraft carriers in the Lake, the Wolverine and the Sabre. And the, this unique, and the Navy's main training for pilots, trained 17,820 pilots during World War II, that's, that's an obscene number of pilots, as a pilot I can tell you that, but it was quite an accomplishment. The Wolverine and the Sabre, prior to World War II, were, were car fairies, and they were converted, they were side-wheel, steam-powered car fairies, and they were recommissioned as aircraft carriers. The Wolverine and the Sabre were stationed at Navy Pier, and they would spend their days cruising up and down the lakefront, waiting for the students to come in and make, I believe, three, three takeoffs and three landings. If they accomplished that and didn't kill themselves, they're immediately sent to their combat assignments because they're already qualified to fly the planes completely. As you recall, in 2018, to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the American Legion, the village, the school, and the American Legion Post put in a Illinois Historical Marker, which tells a detailed story of what went on out there. Placing those honorary road signs will, would be highly visible, and the public will see them, the people will be reminded of the history of the site, and I think a lot of us will get a lot of public pride of our village to have participated in our, in our efforts in World War II. Also, a week ago on Monday, October 13th, we celebrated the 250th anniversary of the United States Navy, and I'm reminded that during the Revolutionary War, one of our ship's captains, John Paul Jones, who commanded the Bonhomme Richard, was in a desperate battle with a British man of war, and our flag was shot down, and in those days, when you lowered your flag, you had surrendered, and the British captain said, "Do you, do you strike your colors?" And John Paul Jones answered, "I have not yet begun to fight." And that started the tradition of the United States Navy. Today, we have some 300 ships, the strongest navy in the history of the world, served by more than, right around 400,000 fellow Americans, and in that navy today, there is still a ship called the Bonhomme Richard, as there is always been. I know I'd feel great joy that, that, what our, that we played our part in history of the Navy's history, and placing this honorary street signs will allow more people to know about our village's past and contribute, past and its contribution to the victory over the Axis Powers in World War II, and it'd be our way of also commemorating the 250th anniversary of the United States Navy. So I would just like to ask that you consider that, put these, these signs up. I know I've seen them, you know, for Roger on his street and Don Hook on his street, and that's what inspired me to ask this. I think it's been a great project, good, good little piece of civic pride for Vernon Hills. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And if anybody, the next time you go up to the high school, right next to the concession stand in the main lobby area there, there's a very nice plaque similar to the one that we saw in our packets, and that, that outlines the entire history of it. Again, thanks to the Legion Post for that, so I, it's, it's a very, very good piece of history. Comments or questions from the board?
From all four.
How do we, how do we proceed with this? Do we, will you bring this back as a, because, does it take board approval to?
Resolution?
Yeah.
Resolution, naming the streets formally, as we'll bring it back at it to the village board.
Okay, all right.
Is this, is this a change? It's not a change, it's just an honorary, you're not formally changing this.
Right, no, this would be just the honorary.
I still think it should be accompanied by legislation.
Yeah.
So it's, it has your formal approval.
Yeah. Okay, then, everybody wants staff to pull together the, yeah.
Yes.
Put together the formal resolutions for the next meeting.
But can I just, can I just chime in real quick before we consent? So, you know, traditionally, it's individual, it's like individuals that we name after streets, does this go against, is that a, like when we do honorary streets, like Roger, for example, versus the name of the aircraft carrier, is that a policy that we have, or is that just something that we just?
It's a past practice, not a policy.
Past practice, okay.
Okay, all right, then we're going forward with this. We will have a resolution at the next meeting, and then, as you can tell by the support from up here, that'll go through pretty quickly. Thank you for bringing this to us. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is presentation of the workers' compensation, liability, and property, auto, and other insurance renewals.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite Thomas Collins with Alliant Insurance Services to the podium. We are in the middle of our insurance renewal for the upcoming policy year that begins on December 1st. Mr. Collins will be presenting our renewal from our, our carrier, RCRMT, and be able to answer any questions that the board might have.
Great, well, good evening, Mayor and the board. I'm from Alliant Insurance, my name is Tom Collins, as Kevin mentioned. I want to thank you for the opportunity to discuss the insurance renewal. Also, I want to just take a quick minute and thank the village manager and all of his staff, including Tom Lyons, for their assistance in gathering the information for this renewal process. I also just wanted to take a quick minute, since there's some new members of the board, just to talk a little bit about, briefly about my history with the village's account. I got involved with the insurance program at the village in 2017 and 18, and I've been the point man working on daily insurance matters since that period of time. My company, Alliant Insurance Services, is one of the largest public entity brokers in, not only in the United States, but in the state of Illinois. We do well over 100 various public entities from counties, cities, villages, transit districts, and some educational institutions as well. So we think we have a lot of experience in the space, and I just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
Hit the keyboard, I think, just the arrow on the keyboard.
This is basically the same plaque that they have inside the school. This one is on the campus. Okay, the first page of the renewal summary, what I like to do here is just highlight some of the key activities that kind of get the renewal process going. So we sat with the staff in September of 2025 and went through a timeline, so we kind of go through and say, okay, when do we need the applications back, and as we drive towards this date of the presentation. We also talk about any claims activities. We went through various claims over the last five years were discussed, and at that conversation we noticed some of the positive trends in workers' compensation for the village, and I'll, I have a slide on that later, and I'll talk about that in some more detail. At this conversation, I also talk about the marketplace, what's going on in the insurance world generally, kind of by line of coverage. I highlighted that there's continued challenges in the liability lines of auto liability, excess liability, and law enforcement, but I also noted that workers' comp and cyber liability have shown improvement over the last few years. So those are some positives. From a marketing standpoint, we just wanted to remind everybody that last year, the account was marketed extensively to various insurance carriers, and the final incumbents were ICRT, which is your current carrier, as well as Travelers, with a combination of IPRF, which stands for the Illinois Public Risk Fund, which writes workers' compensation. At that time, a decision was made to renew with ICRT based on its quoting the best overall price and best overall program. So we just wanted to remind everyone of that. The next slide, what I'd like to do is just talk about that general state of the market that I mentioned in the previous slide, and this exhibit shows kind of by line of the various coverages in the property casualty and liability market, what various respondents to a survey, survey by the Council of Insurance Agents and Brokers, how their various renewals went, and what was their pricing. and Brokers, how their various renewals went, and what was their pricing, increased, decreased percentages. And this, I think, shows you kind of a good overall of what's going on in the various lines of coverage. I would just highlight the second one, for example, commercial auto. You see kind of to the right of the no change, you know, about 80, it looks like about 89% of the respondents are still seeing fairly significant increases on auto liability. You can see property, while it's calmed down over the last few years, still seeing a 1% to 9% increase, around 44%, but some people are seeing some reductions. The next one is cyber, and as I mentioned, some people are starting to see more reductions or at least no change, and that's over 70% of the marketplace. And then I would just highlight, I'd skip down to the umbrella, where the excess liability market is still showing about 78% of the people are still seeing significant increases, and then where comp is trending in the right direction, generally from either no change or some reduction in premiums. So challenging market with liabilities, but some of the other coverages are performing fairly well overall.
So if I understand, so I'm looking at the general liability line of the marketplace, 28% didn't have any change from this year, from last year to this year?
Correct.
For the renewal?
Correct.
And then umbrella would be considered excess liability?
Correct. Yeah, it sits above the primary coverages. Unfortunately, this exhibit does not, is not a public entity-specific exhibit, and so therefore, law enforcement liability, which we're going to talk about here in a second, is one of the more challenged lines of coverage for public entities. Unfortunately, it's not captured here, but I just wanted to mention that, that this is kind of the general commercial market. The next slide, we like to do this, is just kind of show everybody briefly what kind of coverages the village buys in its insurance package. So from left to right, what you see there is the kind of the primary liability coverages, general going from left to right, general liability, law enforcement, your auto and auto physical damages, and public officials. Those are your liability, your primary liability coverages. In the yellow above that, you'll see the deductible level that the village currently carries, and then above that, you see kind of a first layer of coverage. So 1 million per occurrence and 3 million in the aggregate for the general liability, and then across the board. Then what we do is highlight above those, that 15 million of towers for excess liability insurance, and that's a separate tower for all of those coverages. So you have up to $16 million in coverage for any, in one of those specific lines. So that's some good sleep insurance, I think. Going to the right of those, to the tall blue tower, that's your property insurance coverage, which covers your various buildings, your mobile equipment, some unmanned aircraft or, which are your drones. To the right of that, you have cyber liability coverage, so that's if the village was attacked with any kind of a ransomware or malicious virus, or any kind of cyber extortion, you have a million dollars in limit for that type of coverage. The next coverage is employee dishonesty, which is a crime coverage, and that's a $500,000 limit, and it covers the village for, if any employees tried to steal money from the village, or if any monies and securities that were on premises or off premises were stolen. So you have some financial protection there. And then the last one to the right is the workers' compensation, and that's the coverage that covers the village's employees for, if they're injured in the course of their scope of duties for the village. So provides medical and time off coverage for them.
You got retro date on the bottom, 1-1-2017, does that just mean we've had the same coverage since 2017 with the same deductibles?
No, so what a retro date, so those specific coverages are what's called claims made. And so you have a situation with retro coverage where a claim is made, in that instance, it's usually when a lawsuit is filed, but what you can have is a situation where the occurrence may have happened several years previously. So what you have to do is you have to make sure that you go back to the date of when we picked up the coverage, which was, as I said, in 2017.
So our coverage for this policy is 2017?
In terms of, if there was an occurrence going back that way.
Right. And then the deductibles, compared to premiums, as we look at these deductibles here, are you, can you, can premiums be affected by our choice in deductibles? Do we have to have these deductibles to have this coverage? Say, for example, general liability is 5,000. If it was a 10,000 deductible, I'm looking here that you got about a 10% increase just on the primary liability line, it's probably a couple more pages. You know, does, do you look at what it would look like, hey, if you did a $10,000 deductible, you know, you'll save 12,000, but if you do 5,000, you're going to spend 16, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so we'll get to that in the premium summary, but your short answer is yes. It's always really a kind of a risk reward, but we have some of those examples in the next slide that I'll go to now to further answer your question. Okay, so this, so we break this into the various coverage components of the expiring versus the renewal. And as the trustee mentioned, primary liability, the vast majority of that cost, in terms of premium, is on the law enforcement liability. Now, law enforcement liability is probably one of the most challenged lines in public entity, and one of the most challenging lines in Illinois. Now, the excess liability sits above that, and that mirrors kind of what's going on underneath, because you got the $15 million of coverage that we talked about earlier. One thing on this topic that I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of when we talk about law enforcement liability, this is not a reflection at all on your department and how it's run at all. This is, as I said, kind of a big picture problem with public entities. In fact, early this year, ICRT sent a loss consultant, who was a former chief, out to, yep, out to meet and talk with you guys, and they're putting, they're putting together a benchmark survey, and they found a number of departments to talk to, and, yeah, the chief and the command staff spent time and was very helpful with their time. The loss control consultant came away from that, put together a nice letter to the chief, and I know some of the staff have seen it, very complimentary of the leadership of the police department, how it's run, your processes and procedures, and everything you guys do. So again, your police department should be complimented for that, and it's not reflective of the premiums that are showing up. It's just a troubled part of the marketplace. The other thing I want to highlight is the workers' compensation. What you see there is a reduction in the premium. That's really driven by the positive loss trends that we're going to see in another slide. I know that Kristin in Human Resources, I know that for years, that's been a focus of hers, and she spent a lot of her efforts on trying to drive down that cost, and those positive trends have directly impacted that reduction in premiums. So let's hope that trend can continue. Cyber liability's down a tick, and then you have the kind of bottom-line premium cost, $26,000 increase in net cost, which is an increase in percentage-wise of 2.9%. I'm going through all my renewals, as I told the village staff when we went through these, and this, that level of increase, that small of a level, is a really good result in this marketplace. So I just wanted to share that, as I see the results of other public entity accounts that I'm working on. Next part of that is exposure changes. We just go through some of the various exposures that we look at, be it the building values that you guys have, vehicles, payroll, and the sales tax interruption revenues that you insure. You can see the change year-over-year on those. Under that, I have the notes, so as the trustee was asking about, does the deductible level you have impact your premium? Or another version was, if you cut back on your limits, can you save premiums? So I have some things there where we did get some different options, as I talked to the staff as to what they wanted to look at. If you were to buy less excess liability limit from 15 down to 10, you would save roughly $60,000. If the village were to choose a 10,000 property deductible versus the current 5,000, you'd have a small savings there of $28,000, $150,000. And the same thing for law enforcement liability, you currently have a $10,000 deductible. If you went up to 25,000, there'd be a little more savings there. So it's always kind of a risk reward trade-off. Some of those don't, I don't think are particularly attractive, but we got those options, and as the village staff wanted to see them, so does that, does that help?
Yeah, I know if I wanted.
Yes, thank you. And if I knew I wanted to see more in depth, I can just, staff will get that for me.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Is there any overall questions with that premium summary, or any of the premiums or exposure changes?
How often do we have a property loss that's covered?
Very rarely. You guys have not had a major property loss. You've had, you know, generally speaking, you've had, yeah, very minor. I mean, you might have some auto accidents or streetlight issues, but, you know, people hit streetlights, but in terms of one of your buildings being severely damaged by a fire or something like that, since I've been involved, there's, yeah, thankfully been.
I know it seems like a small amount in the big picture, but saving $28,500 in order to avoid spending 5,000 more on the rare chance actually seems like a pretty good deal to me.
We can certainly do that if you like. Usually what we try to do in terms of savings, trustee, is we like to see it kind of fund the difference. So the difference there would be 5,000 in deductibles, you kind of want to see that savings, and if it's a little less than that, but if that's, if that's something that people are interested in doing, we can certainly pursue that.
I've never been in a situation where the savings for the deductible is the same as the premium.
Yeah.
Savings. That seems kind of unusual, what you're suggesting there, so, but to save $28,500 in order to avoid spending $5,000 more on a very rare chance of an event that hasn't happened in years.
Yeah.
Seems like, you know, $28,500 is $28,500.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. Whereas if something bad happened, we'd have to spend an extra 2,200, so.
Yeah, it's a rare, it's a rare event. Now, if we were talking about a difference between a 5,000 deductible and a $50,000 deductible, then I would understand, but, so, it's not a big deal, but.
Yeah, no, it's, you know, how people want to look at, and again, the risk reward is what it's all about, so if that's something you guys wish to pursue, we can certainly do that.
I might ask this, not every year, but I think I've asked this before, but I always forget my, the answer. So your fees are based off of what?
So we get commission on accounts, and the commissions we get vary. I, I'm kind of going through renewal processes, and I, if you want to know the commission, I'd have to get back to you, because I, there's no like set commission amount on each account, depending on the carriers.
So the insurance companies give you the commission?
Correct.
Signing?
Well, yeah, so it's built into the premium, so.
So what incentive do you have to save us, to find us a better, better premiums?
Yeah, I guess.
They're paying me a commission off of the current premiums?
Yeah. Well, I mean, you know, part of it is, you know, you have to trust your person to make sure that, you know, your goals are aligned. I, this topic.
Goals are aligned to have coverage with saving money, so.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I guess that.
How do we, how do, how are you incentivized, I can't incentivize, thank you, got it cold, to find savings for us when we're comparing apples to apples from?
Yeah, no, I'm not necessarily, I wouldn't say I'm necessarily incentivized. What I consider, it's my job, you know, so, you know, when we talked about these numbers initially, they were a little higher into the overall premium, and I went back and was able to get a reduction, so, you know, theoretically, I'm getting less commission, so.
Well, the reduction came because of our work with workers' comp, though, right? I mean, that.
No, no, so these numbers improved since the initial, and the work comp was a part of it, but I'm talking the overall.
Initial, when you first started, these were better, so take primary liability.
So for the renewal numbers that you see now, when we got the initial quote for this, they were higher than they are now.
So how did you, what, the work to get those down is finding different carriers, different?
No, I was going back to the carrier and saying, look, we have a profitable account, here we have a profitable relationship, and I need to get these numbers down. And, you know, the letter to the police department about the law enforcement, I'm like, that should be worth something, you know, you guys praise them, so now you gotta give a little, you know, discount for those, you know.
Do we know what those previous numbers were?
Pardon me?
Do you, we have those numbers?
About $17,000 more.
Yeah, it's about $17,000 more.
On an almost a million-dollar policy, is that, I'm looking at that?
Yep.
Any other questions or comments or concerns from the board?
The next slide, what we do is we just cover some of the ancillary coverages that are kind of outside the property, main property casualty program that we just discussed. There's a fiduciary police pension fund policy, it covers the administration of the police pension fund and police pension board. There's a volunteer's accident, medical expense policy, that's, you know, a very small premium. You have three underground storage tanks and five above-ground storage tanks that you currently insure. As we mentioned last year and mentioned this year, as those tanks get older, they become a little harder to insure, lots of people want to insure them, because the, I guess the probability of an underground leak goes up. So what happened here is deductible, the chub went up from 5,000 to 50,000. The only other carrier that would write an over 30-year tank had a $75,000 deductible, so there's a little bit of a change in that. And then the last one is a public official's bond premium, something mandated by the Illinois Miniscule Code, and so that coverage has various limits by various positions. That covers the village president, village manager, assistant village manager, police chief, finance director, and I think one other position. So those, as I said, are the ancillary coverages that are outside of the main property casualty The next slide, so these are the work comp trends that I mentioned earlier, and just wanted to highlight it, because very good results, and as I mentioned, Kristin and the rest of the staff has worked very hard on this. At the top is the policy year 2021, and those are the incurred losses for the ensuing policy year. So we're on a very nice trend currently. There's been just a lack of severity or big losses, which has been, had been an issue in previous years, and we haven't seen that over the last couple of years. So the current year is still in progress, but it's a, it's obviously a very nice trend, and it had a substantial portion of why the work comp premium dropped, because of this loss history. So I just wanted to mention that.
Sorry, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here. So on the premium rate changes by line of business, I think it's about four or five slides earlier, and you got, like, remember that's the first question I asked, like, you know, if you take general liability, 28% has no change, 61%, 1% to 9%, 6%. I feel like our commercial properties, like, some of our policies are into the 10% to 19% column, where, now, you had said this is the whole marketplace, not separating public entities too?
Correct.
So why would you not have just the public entities chart like this? Because it would be, wouldn't it make sense?
No, it wouldn't make a lot of sense if it was available, if something was available. I couldn't find anything available that broke it down in this way that I think is fair. I couldn't find anything available that, that broke it down in this way that I think is very easy to understand. I mean, there's a lot of narrative.
Well, it doesn't have to be easy to understand as long as it's data that we can look at.
Yeah, if it was available, I, trustee, I would believe.
And I would, I would follow up on that. To make this even more useful, it'd be nice to show it weighted based on a percentage of our costs. Because general liability is about half of our insurance cost and workers comp is about the other half. So just those two lines alone are, are the main things that we're looking at. The cybersecurity, even though it went down forty seven percent, for forty percent of response, forty seven percent of respondents. It went down one to nine percent. It was only, you know, a couple hundred bucks, so it's almost meaningless.
Yeah, I, I will make a note to next year to see if I can find something that's.
Well, can you find it before next year?
Pardon me?
Can we try to find it before next?
I'll see if there's something available, as I said, if I, I did look around for it, if I would have had it, I would.
It just seems that, you know, you say all these hyper, like general liability is twenty eight percent, sixty one percent, one to nine percent. And we're, we're living in that six percent, right? Like, I feel like our premiums are higher. I get what you're saying about what the marketplace is. It'd be nice to know what marketplace, what data we're pulling here. Because if this, otherwise, this chart, is it irrelevant?
Well, I.
Doesn't, I mean, state of the marketplace, right?
Yeah, what I couldn't.
It's feel like we're on the high end here. I mean, hey, you save us one and a half percent, you know, because we're profitable, I guess, so.
What I can.
Which means we don't, we don't, we pay in, but we don't ask for anything out, right? Is that a profitable client for an insurance company?
Well, if you, if you're not a profitable client for an insurance company, you're going to get much higher rates or you're going to get non renewed.
But profitable is that their, their, like, our premiums outweigh their, when they have to pay out, right? That is considered a profitable insurance client?
Right, right.
All right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see what I can get after something that, if there's any kind of exhibit that maybe answers what you're looking for.
Kevin, do we see like with Libertyville and do we ever see what their, ever make comparisons to them?
No, because.
Mostly on like the type of policies they carry and the limits that they carry?
Oh, the, the coverages we have are pretty consistent with what I see for our size. It's hard to compare premiums because every town has different level of property values, different number of employees, different number of automobiles, so it's really hard to compare apples to apples. But from a policy coverage standpoint, our, our deductibles, our, our limits are pretty consistent with what I've seen.
Okay, thank you.
And this is just the last slide and I include this. I'm not going to go over every point here, but I just want to make kind of the general point that part of what you pay in terms of the premiums with ICMT is they have loss control that comes out. As I mentioned, they come out to the, talk to the police department, but also the, the public works group and to your, to the HR people to make sure that they provide any training that's needed either from a loss prevention standpoint or from a compliance standpoint, as well as a number of bullet points down. In July, they, they awarded a safety grant of five thousand dollars to the police department for some law enforcement equipment they requested. And they had provided ten thousand dollars the year before for body cameras. So, you know, you're getting more than just premium. You're getting online kind of boots on the ground to provide the training and services that, that you guys need for loss prevention and compliance reasons. So just wanted to make everyone aware of that. And that's included in the premium. That's all I have for the presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, thank you very much.
Right, thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item then is discussion of the concept review of proposed Primrose School at eight portion of the eighteen twenty North Milwaukee Avenue. Director Jennings?
Thank you. The representatives of the Primrose School are proposing a combination of a subdivision of eighteen twenty North Milwaukee, which is the undeveloped lot just south of Menards. The, the lot that's proposed is, it's about one point eight acres. It would leave a one point six acre lot along the road across from Bell Tire and then a two point six to acre lot just along Greg's Parkway there at the, at the bottom of this. I did identify a couple of, a couple of issues before I asked the, the group up. First, the subdivision itself, I just want to ensure if the, if the committee is in favor of this. Just understanding that this does involve subdivision of a lot and, and creating three parcels where there is one currently. Procedurally, this does involve an amendment to the PUD as well as a conversion certificate. This is a one hundred percent non retail use in a, in the core retail overlay. We also, in just dealing with past developments on the south side of Greg's Parkway, we've learned that there are restrictive covenants that are outside of village control. So the owners of the, the land have gotten together, the collective parcel owners that have a common, a common area, have restrictive covenants that have become, that we're aware of, that have use restrictions that are outside of the zoning, outside of the PUD. So there's just another layer of regulation that does need to be looked into. And then my, my last point was, as we've seen on many, many developments with the, the increased use of cement fiber board, this, this project does propose cement fiber board, which wouldn't necessarily meet the masonry requirement in section five seventy eight of our code. So with that, I'd like to have the group come forward and introduce the project.
Good evening. Sorry, I was taking notes. Well, I appreciate the time very much. My name is Marvin Wensman. I'm a development manager with Primrose Schools. I'm here with Kevin Heffernan. He's our civil engineer with Stonefield Engineering. And yeah, happy to give a quick overview of Primrose, what we do and why we're looking at this site. And I definitely think we have a couple of questions and yeah, are excited about the opportunity. Quick little background on Primrose, so we're headquartered out of Atlanta, Georgia. We are located in thirty four states. We have over five hundred fifty locations throughout the nation, throughout every major market. I think the last one was Memphis. We are going there now. But yeah, we came across this site with our real estate director who is local. Our franchise owners, so every location that we build and operate is then operated by a local franchise owner. So they are near the Vernon Hills area, very excited about this opportunity. Quick little overview of the concept plan, well, I guess before I get to that, Primrose, of course, is a daycare as you guys are, may or may not know. We are focused on, you know, looking to, you know, improve the future generation and want to provide that amenity to support families. With this concept plan, we have our prototypical twelve story building. As for building design guidelines, we're open to adhering. So what we sent to you previously is what we have done throughout the country. It's kind of our standard prototype, so we're willing to work with you on that. As for the size of the building, roughly about thirteen thousand to fourteen thousand square feet. In terms of playground, roughly the same, which is located north of the building and to the west. The main entry is on the southeast corner. And we're looking to have roughly about fifty two parking stalls at this location. I guess any questions with the concept plan or our use?
Just one quick question about that. Hey, I'm assuming this is a mistake on the whoever drew this. You're, you're not using a British traffic flow?
I was gonna say this.
The, the British traffic.
You have the traffic backwards.
The traffic is traveling.
On the right hand side, we're going the.
We better get rid of that architect then.
Well, I was wondering if your architectural firm was from, you know, part of the British company?
Yeah, that's our civil here. Yeah, Casco, they're out of St. Louis. But yeah, good catch.
That's an error.
It's not a plan, okay.
Right, correct, yeah. Yeah, and I think one thing too that Kevin and I were talking about earlier was, you know, we want to be, we want to work with you guys as much as possible. We've been looking at this site for the last six months. I think with the owners of this parcel, they want to be able to utilize every part of it, right? If they go, you know, they've kind of been entertaining going to the south, going to the north, they've landed on that northwest corner. I think what I'm getting at here is that drive to the south. If you guys have any reservations about that connectivity, you know, we're open to adjusting that.
Adjusting it in what way?
So probably lining it up with that drive to the east with that, that, that car repair. I think, or is it Aldi? Sorry about that. Probably line that up so it kind of cuts across to the west.
So then it would be a much smaller northern parcel.
Yeah, we just were thinking, I mean, again, we're open to working with you on that. I think that in terms of saleability with these owners, they like how this looks currently. You know, depending on use, the type of user, I think that pad to the northeast, we would want, you know, over an acre. But again, we want to make it make sense for the development. You know, we don't want, you know, we can see, you know, potentially some issues with traffic with the.
Would that be something that would be looked at in technical review?
Yes, yeah, we would, we would look at the alignment, the separation, how far offset is that? If they're offset enough, we don't necessarily have an issue. It's when they get a little bit closer where you get conflicting left turns that it's an issue. But this, this has not gone through technical review to, to really examine that. But, but I would concur, generally speaking, you would look for the, the parcel to be over an acre. And if, if that's possible to arrange safely, I would agree with that.
And you are aware you'll be the fourth new daycare center opening in the space of about eighteen months?
Yeah, we hear that a lot actually throughout the country. Yeah, we see a, a great demand and for our clientele, I mean, we, yeah, we are not worried about that.
How do you define your clientele?
I would say affluent. Yeah, I think that, you know, it, it fits the, the market from our perspective. And, you know, our, our analytics team has a lot of metrics. They look at median household income, home prices, all of that. And yeah, we're excited and it checks all the boxes for us.
And I wasn't saying the fourth one in the community, I was saying the fourth new one. Added to everything else we've already had for a while.
For sure.
Yeah, because we've got the Kitty Academy and the, and the Nest and whoever replaced Guidepost, yeah, those are all brand new, so. Yeah, well, no, that's been around. I'm saying, I'm, I'm talking new. And you would have up to a hundred ninety four?
That is correct.
Potential?
Yeah. Yeah, we've never been at capacity. It's usually we run about eighty five to ninety percent. Really, we never get to a hundred percent because of how you age. There's usually about two classrooms per age group. And as you're trying to accommodate for that move up, you want to leave space in those classrooms.
Yeah, and the stuff that's been brought for us, ninety percent is what everybody always shoots for, so.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions from the board? So what you're looking for from us tonight is.
At this point, just any, any feedback that would be useful in our, in our process, the next step, if the committee is generally in favor of this moving ahead, would be technical review, where we, we really dive into the engineering of the site and the, the configuration of the subdivision. As I had noted in the staff memo, that, that's the point where we would really want them to also explore the restrictive covenants that may be impacting the, the uses on this site.
Are you talking about the original Cuneo covenants on that?
There, so since the PUD was approved, so Menards is the primary owner. The other owners pay into, based on the, the size of their lots, they pay into common area maintenance. With that, they may have also recorded restrictive covenants that we don't necessarily know of. We, we just ran into this issue a couple of years ago on the south side of Greg's Parkway where the Lowe's Staples development has a restrictive covenant that prohibited daycares. The village didn't prohibit daycares, but the other owners did. So just out of an abundance of caution, before they go too far into this, they really need to explore if any sort of covenants have been recorded that we haven't seen yet.
I mean, I think that's a very good point. We actually did look at that Lowe's site and our broker and information that we got through kind of the grapevine said we weren't allowed, like you're mentioning. As for this site, yeah, happy to look into it. I think that's a good point.
Can we cycle through some of these, like elevations? Do you have more elevations on here?
I think we just have the two sheets showing the four sides of the building.
Kind of looks like a warehouse.
Yeah, I guess what, from our perspective, it's kind of the new.
Warehouse for kids, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
More stone or something.
I mean, maybe we can provide photos of actual prototypes. I, I think they look a lot better in, in person, which I'm happy to provide. You know, the board and baton look and kind of the darker features, you know, is, is something that we have changed our prototype in the last couple of years. Our campus design team has worked, you know, hard and again, with, as everyone knows, with rising interest rates, construction pricing, everything, we kind of made the switch to this, this new prototype that we're proud of. But again, kind of mentioning before, in terms of building design materials, we're happy to take a look at your code and open to, you know, any comments.
And Andrew, you said there'd have the exception of the code or variance of the code because of the fiber board?
So, so we have a four sided masonry requirement. It has been, the exception for cement fiber board has been granted in the past. But again, to your point, some, you know, feedback requesting them to mix in additional stone. You know, they, they can carry that onto technical review hearing. Ultimately, that decision is a board decision and not a planning and zoning commission. So if you, if there's any, any feedback that this committee has to that, that would be.
Do we have any photos of sightlines from the, from the properties to the west in terms of what they would see to this area?
I guess.
Yeah, I guess just speaking from the properties in the west, there is that large Greg's Landing reservoir that's directly to the west with significant landscaping around it. And then it is, I believe, a duplex complex or attached single family residential complex about two hundred feet west. So there's a significant buffer to the west until you hit the residential parcels. So for sightlines, it's probably pretty obstructed and pretty screened in terms of screening that playground area.
Andrew, how many daycares do we have, plus the ones we just have new?
Total, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but.
Estimate?
We have, just in the last few years, we've had four. We did have the one across the street that didn't get constructed. So with those, gosh, probably a good eight or nine.
In your county, the ones that are, what, like the one under construction on Fairway?
I can try to do a, a better estimate.
Yeah, Kitty Academy is, is under construction and they're working on the Nest right now.
Is it the Bell ambulance?
That seems like quite a few.
I, I mean, I think the, I think the building looks like a warehouse. And for the residents over there, I don't think they need to look at another warehouse.
over there, I don't think they need to look at another warehouse.
I agree with you.
I think it should be a nicer looking building.
More stone.
More stone.
Yeah.
More attractive.
I'd like to see retail.
Because even those sightlines, you know, the winner of those sightlines, it's, they're gonna, they're gonna be clear shots right there. Even though you have a reservoir, it's still a line of sight, and the trees, they're not going to be in bloom. I don't know how tall the trees are. What's that?
Correct.
Yeah, you're gonna, yeah.
Yeah, happy to take.
Those are my comments.
I think that'll be taken into account also, not just with the building materials, but with landscape, sorry, landscaping around the rear. Make sure that it's a very presentable product from all four sides.
Do we, do we, are we concerned about the noise levels of the, I mean, kids playing outside or kids playing outside is, that's not really.
Yeah, not with, I mean, a couple hundred feet.
No.
And I don't think they'll bother Menards.
Menards is loud enough.
Andrew, too, for the, I'm looking at your two entrance areas, the one to the south. I, I know one of the big things is that it comes in as a two-lane, and then basically goes into a one. You either take a right turn into Aldi's or go straight into Menards. And that one's, that little area is a little tricky spot for, for people going in. Now you're adding more traffic. I, I don't know, because it, the two-lane coming in merges down to one. And then you got a right turn, and then the other one's straight.
So that's something we can look at, the general flow, whether or not one needs to be an entrance and one needs to be an exit, is absolutely something we would look at during technical review to see, to see what's safe for this location.
It is right at that, right at that merge point where that second, where that south street is. Doesn't seem like it's the best flow.
That's something we were looking at as well. We were playing with the alignment with Aldi's drive. We, I think that's why we came to this resolution, where it's a little bit further south. So it was before that merge point, or at least that was the attempt. But we're definitely open to working with Mr. Jennings here, that final location. But traffic, especially pickup drop off hours, that's a, our peak concern.
Or possibly even straightening it so it's more north-south instead of angled southeast.
Yeah.
And then adding more land to the north property, and then having a shared drive between the three or something like that.
Then you mess with a little too close to the signal. So it really is a pull, but we'll definitely massage this a little bit. I think what we're looking at is that preliminary version. And we'll go through a few iterations as we work with the village.
Yeah, those kind of details will be in technical review and stuff.
I came up with nine commercial daycares plus home, home daycares and churches.
Including the home?
Uh, plus the home.
Nine commercial.
Nine commercial.
And this would be 10.
This would be 10.
But apparently there's still a need, I guess. You must have done your studies, so.
Definitely. If we were to zoom out here, I think what you see is along Greg's Landing, right at this, we have a little bit of commercial at this Menards and then to the south. But if you zoom out and look west, even, you know, further east on the other side of the commercial corridor, there's significant residential zones, all the way from the duplex zones to the detached single-family to the multifamily. So as you zoom out, especially going west, it's, the majority of all the development is different subdivisions. So this is actually a really good location being between that commercial and the residential, so.
Juan, as we all know, we have no control over competition.
One of the things you should consider, though, is the, the need to issue a certificate of building use conversion here. That is a threshold question that you should all be thinking about. And if the answer's yes, then you get to, you know, amending the PUD and the way the building looks, et cetera, et cetera. So I, you know, Andrew mentioned that early in his presentation. That should not be lost. There has to be a willingness. There are different entitlements needed for this daycare than some of the others that we've dealt with.
So based on our comments, what do you recommend?
I can't recommend what to.
It's not his job to recommend.
In terms of building use conversion and PUD amendment, but building use conversion relates to the desire to have retail there, right? And the, and the decision not to if you choose. So that's really a threshold question for this board.
And just to add to that, that, that would be one of the first things, as soon as they would explore the, any restrictive covenants. We had changed the conversion certificate language to make it clear that that question would get answered before they get deeper into the process. So the next thing the board would see would be a conversion certificate application.
Anything else from the board or anything else counsel?
Oh, nothing further.
Okay. Okay, so I think we've given you some.
Yeah, can we just ask maybe a couple of questions?
Sure.
Maybe for Andrew. I, I, just looking at what you provided, really appreciate kind of this overview of the process. And I guess we just wanted to make sure and kind of understand that process in a little bit more detail and also the timing associated with it. So with this concept review, which we're going through right now, the next step is the technical review from understanding kind of rough timelines. And again, won't hold you to it. I think we just need kind of a range. That process, the review of that is, is 20 business days, and then we need to be put onto an agenda, which that time takes about 30 calendar days. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'd recommend just set up a virtual meeting. I don't know if you're in town. I think you, did you fly?
I haven't, no.
Yeah, just set up a virtual meeting with me. I can go through, you, you have the normal process, and then you've got unique aspects to this property, and I'll walk you through all of it.
Okay, appreciate that. I mean, I think those other things we can hit during that meeting. Anything else that you have, Kevin?
Most of my notes are about what can be done simultaneously versus separately, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll walk, I'll walk you both through that. Just give me a call tomorrow. We'll set it up.
Yeah, perfect. Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, that's it for Committee of the Hall, correct?
Yes, sir. We will have a closed session to discuss litigation.
Okay, then is there a motion to adjourn Committee of the Hall and go into closed session for discussion of litigation?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second. A roll call, please.
Trustee Markward.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Shing.
Aye.
Trustee Lundin.
Aye.
President Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned, and we will not be conducting any business when we finish closed session. So thank you and good night.